It is now six thirty, call into order. Trophy Club Mud One, all five directors are present. Vice President Rose, President Wilson, Director Castenway, Secretary of Treasury Flynn, and Director Chapman.
Time.
I said in the beginning, it's six thirty.
Good. I'll wake up.
Okay. Time check. You're good. Okay, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning the item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during item, you must complete the speaker form that includes the topic of your statement. Citizen comments should be limited to matters of which the board has authority. Are there any citizen comments?
No, sir.
All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. All matters listed as considered agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. We have section one of consent agenda, the June 2019 check register, B, the June 17 regular meeting minutes, C, the tax collections report, third quarter fiscal year 2019, and D, quarterly investment report, quarter FY 2019. I'll entertain the motion.
I move to approve consent agenda, A, June 2019 check register, B, June 2017, 2019 regular meeting minutes, C, tax collections report, third quarter FY 2019, and D, quarterly investment report, third quarter FY 2019.
We have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to approve the June 2019 check register, June 17, 2019, regular meeting minutes, and the tax collection and quarterly investment third quarter fiscal year 2019 reports. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Director Chapman. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. We'll enter to regular session, consider and take appropriate action to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement with Denton County for property tax assessment and collection. Staff.
I take this one. So every year, we have to sign this. It's been the current situation. This year, the main change that Denton County is doing is instead of making this an annual signature, now we can do it up to a five-year with an automatic renewal every year. So obviously with Denton County, so I'll go from here in the beginning, we're looking to just sign the interlocal agreement with Denton County, who is our tax assessor that we pay each year to collect all of our taxes or set everything up for tax collection. Yeah.
Are we, are you advocating doing a multi-year agreement or doing a one-year agreement?
So they're all switching to the multi-year now. It's making it easier on the Dentons County side because of all their clients that they have, they have to try to collect for each one, get signatures, we have to get three copies, there's a lot of loops through it. Now you can, at any point in time, we could just continue it, but it's taxes are through Denton County and Michelle French, who we've been using for years, who's also going to be doing it again this year. So I recommend as staff to sign it, interlocal.
Vice President Rose?
I move to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for property tax assessment and collection between Denton County, Texas, and the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, Trophy Club, Texas.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Rose to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and Trophy Club Mud One District for property tax assessment and collection. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by Director Castenway. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action regarding district participation in the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Sanitary Sewer Overflow Initiative. Staff.
Mr. President, thank you. Back in June, we had a comprehensive compliance investigation from the state of Texas on our wastewater treatment plant. It went well in terms of the plant itself, but the truth of it is, under the Clean Water Act, when sewers perform as designed, meaning when they get plugged up, they back up and spill on the ground at the nearest upstream overflow. That's called an SSO, and it's a violation of federal law and a violation of state law as implemented by the state passing through the EPA regulation. We have had several overflows between the time we were last audited, which was in November of 2016, and June of 2019. They're required to come and give us that compliance audit every two years. One of the programs they have is called the SSOI, the Sanitary Sewer Overflow Initiative, which effectively involves the creation of a planning document that identifies the fact that we know what the principal causes of SSOs are and establishes a strategy for minimizing the number of sanitary sewer overflows in the system. To participate in this program can help alleviate some of the regulatory fine burden that comes along with receiving a notice of violation. It just basically helps with the relationship with TCEQ. It involves that process where we have to sign our commitment to be a part of this plan, and then within a hundred and eighty-day period of time, submit that plan for their consideration. Once it's approved, we have ongoing follow-up requirements in terms of reporting to the state. It does represent an additional workload for the staff and our consultants that we select to have us write this plan if we choose to do it that way, but it's been my experience that it's generally a positive thing to participate in. And in fact, we have a good story to tell. For example, we've just spent a significant amount of money on a new vector truck, which allows us to clean sewer lines, which is a preventative maintenance activity in, maybe in advance of a sewer backup, as well as upgraded our technology around the camera van. So those are two things that we can demonstrate that we've done in a responsible way, where we put our money where our mouth is, and our intent is to do a better job of preventing these SSOs. Staff feels like, while this does represent a bit more of a burden in terms of regulatory reporting, that it is a positive thing, and we recommend that the board direct the staff to sign this document to participate with TCEQ in the sanitary sewer overflow initiative.
I have a question. What, was this something that was recommended by them, or was this something that we recommend? How did this come about?
Yes, sir. So when Imron was here, he's a nice fellow, he works and does the audits for us. He came out and wasn't certain at the time whether or not muds qualify, municipalities qualify for the SSOI program. It's not totally clear that private utilities do, and he wasn't certain whether muds do or not. But when he got back to the office, he called me and said, hey, I've checked it out, you guys qualify for this. Mike just passed me a note and said, in fact, we can avoid fines altogether with successful participation in this program. So he's the one who said, you guys can participate, are you interested? I said, we'd certainly like to take that under consideration. So he sent me this letter, which is in your board packet regarding, it's both a letter as well as effectively an information packet on the SSOI program. Fort Worth participates in this program, and they literally have hundreds of SSOs every year, given the size of their system. That, I've spoke to the board about this before. Again, it's when the sewer system performs as it's designed, gets plugged up, it overflows on the ground where you can see it. That is now against the law, and we have to deal with that in a regulatory framework.
One final question. What percentage of districts do you know of that participate in a plan such as this or this particular plan?
I think almost all big cities do. You know, some folks maybe don't have quite this many challenges. Newer systems have less SSOs than older systems, primarily because the design standards have changed a little bit. You have to, if you're designing a system today, you have to provide more capacity for wet weather flows. Typically, wet weather flows are the cause of most overflows. You know, in our case, we've had a couple that are related to the startup of the new plant process and getting the bugs worked out of that. Hopefully, those will go away. And the other ones that we've had, like in the last twelve months, two of them were related to a contractor calling for markouts of our utility lines and then hitting them anyway. So in those cases, you know, we really have, what's the word, little ability to prevent them, but certainly, we have a cleanup responsibility after the fact. So I don't know if I could give you an exact percentage, Greg, but I think, you know, my advice is that it makes sense to do. I know Tony has some other clients that participate in this program and might be able to offer a different, a different perspective on that, but I know that Fort Worth participates, and I'm pretty sure now Dallas does as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I have a few questions, I guess. One, it's my understanding, we do not have an SSO plan. Is that correct? Or do?
We do not have a written SSOI plan accepted by the state.
We do have an SSO response plan.
Okay, because I thought there was something there. So we have a response plan.
So one of the big highlights on this, about the fines and everything, if we're participating in this, actively participating and keeping up with our paperwork, which it is a lot of paperwork, if we have a sanitary sewer overflow, TCEQ's not going to come back and fine us for that. Because we are participating in their plan, if we're keeping up with it and doing what we're supposed to be doing.
So if I read the documentation correctly, we need to identify causes. If we don't identify a cause and have one from that cause, then it's not covered under the plan. If I read what I, so my point here would be, is we need to be very thorough with our I know I've, I have looked at previous research, I think I was looking at Austin or was it San Antonio Water System down there? They have, they have plans, and I think I've, they may even be on the computer here. I've looked at them at one time or another. So, yeah, I think, I think it's probably a good idea to have one. I know it's going to be, there will be additional cost, because it depends on who writes it. I mean, if we contract out to write it, then there'll be a cost there, but if, if we do our research and write it ourselves and come up with an answer, and Tony reviews it, then we might be neckels and dimes ahead on that, but just thought.
Staff would probably anticipate paying someone to help us write it. In the end of the day, it has to be our plan, but the fact of the matter is, we, you know, we're fairly busy folks, and, you know, to get this done in the timeframe, and realistically, engineering firms do have some capacity for doing this kind of planning work, so.
There is a hundred and eighty days. From the time we sign a letter, we have a hundred and eighty days to put a plan in as straight as I, as I understand what I read.
And if the board approves, then I'm going to inquire of the two engineering firms we have under contract, what they estimated would cost to assist us in this kind of a plan, so we get a scope and a fee from the two firms that you all have already selected. We'll see where that is, and we have enough time to get that into the budget. I want to say that we had to sign the commitment within thirty days. So that part of it, which is just the, you know, intent to participate declaration, has to be done in thirty days, but the plan itself, we've got half a year to get her done.
Yeah. I have a question for counselor, for counsel. You represent other, other utility districts. Do you know of any in your practice that have this and might have examples that might be beneficial?
I've got one other client who's actively participating in it. I'm sure they would give me their template. I asked them, in connection with the conversation with Carmen, what their experience was and whether they would do it again, and their general manager responded that it was a pretty significant amount of paperwork, but overall, they think it was worth it, and the protection from fines was the primary reason, and they would do it again. But they said it's, it's an administrative burden. But yes, to answer your question, I'm sure I can get there.
What's going to be the impact on staff? We tend to run thin, and I've heard one thing reiterated over and over and over again is, it is a administrative burden. And I also know that staff tends to be, to their detriment, cheap and refuse to get the people they need to really do the job. And so one of the things I'm concerned about is adding more overhead on staff when they're already running razor-thin, when I'm already hearing about people working sixty hours a week. And so I'd like to know what's going to be the plan to address this.
I think we can probably do most of this plan in-house, so I'm assuming it's probably going to trickle down to me. I think I can do most of the plan, and we maybe have an engineer review it. Coming to staff time, I mean, obviously, we've got a new vac truck, we've got a new camera van, so we're going to need more probably field personnel that we're already looking for. So if we were fully staffed, this wouldn't be an issue, but we are looking at, you know, other venues of acquiring staff now, so hopefully, maybe all this can come together at the same time.
Mike is sure.
We'll pull the resources from where we need to. I mean, we've done the whole town before. When we first started with our first vac truck and camera van, we went out, we camered the whole town, ran all the lines. Obviously, we need to do it again now, and we have that on our books to do, so this initiative's going to go hand-in-hand with that. And then as we find problems, we can budget for them, or we can fix them if they're not that expensive, so it's pretty much going to be running right along with.
Yeah, because it does call for an evaluation.
Do I?
I think it does call for an evaluation, doesn't it?
Yes.
It says agrees to conduct a sanitary sewer system evaluation, the wastewater system. Okay, so that, I mean, just the scope of that evaluation would need to be determined. I mean, so it's, one is the agreement, two is, I mean, one is signing the initial agreement to do it, two is developing the plan, and three is having another plan on the ground to do an evaluation. I mean, those are.
And I think we've got a little bit of money budget for that, maybe in two years for sewer master plan.
That's really on the master planning side, Mike, but Bill, your point is right on, and Greg, you as well. You know, for example, this year, Lori did most of the work on getting the Consumer Confidence Report out, published online. That was typically something done by our communications person, which is a position we still have not filled. We've been kind of looking at how to position that, because it'd be different than what we had before, but there's a capacity there that's needed to get some of these things in place, in terms of just writing plans, working through that process, and helping with some of the regulatory communication back to the state. So it's a fair question. We still need to address that. We've had that open position now for more than a year, and it's time to get that filled, but exactly the rules and responsibilities that that person would take on, we're still trying to define that. I want to talk about that a little bit more when we get to item, to the general manager report, but it will require some extra work. The other thing I would add is, in North Carolina, they have a similar program, and they had a thing in their plant, said we're going to clean ten percent of our sewer system every year. We got to looking at it, and they kept submitting it to the state, but they were cleaning the same ten percent of the system every year, which is not really effective in terms of its execution. So, you know, getting it right, so that it's both doable by the staff, but actually meets the intent, is also important.
Oh, one other question. The, if you start the program and realize this is more than we can handle, given staff, what are the ramifications if you, is it possible to, to exit the program? And if you exit the program, what are the ramifications to doing that?
It is talked about in the document. Let's see, I guess it covers what happens if you choose not to participate, and then also talks about, is there anything you can do to be dropped from the program? So I guess it doesn't, it doesn't address your question specifically.
Yeah, I didn't really see anything along those lines, but, you know, if you get into the program and realize that, wow, this is more than we're able to accommodate, and you obviously don't want to be asked to leave the program, you know, can you voluntarily exit the program? And then, not only how's that officially viewed by TCEQ, but how's that unofficially viewed by TCEQ?
Right. Well, you can see in the development of this document that one of the things they're hoping to see is that the elected representatives, whether it's a council or a board, is going to put the money where it's needed to get the job done. I mean, that, they're, I mean, they refer to that several times. You know, have you budgeted for it? Can you show that you put money here to accomplish this task, whether it's hiring staff, whether it's hiring outside, third parties to help, or whether it's just simply funding, you know, evaluation studies for the whole system, a thorough master plan? Like Mike said, we do have, we anticipate doing a master plan of both water and sewer to get an updated plan on both sides. You know, part of that would include some condition assessment work. We're doing that as a part of our asset management program development right now, so we'll be in a better place to help inform that plan, regardless of who writes it up, here in the next so many months. I don't know if I can honestly answer your question, what happens if you want to exit.
My understanding is you can exit, but to the extent they didn't take any enforcement action while you were participating in the program, after you exit, they have the right to then go back and pursue enforcement under their, their normal procedures.
Oh.
So they can bite back.
Yep, I have, I have one other comment, and I'll let you do it. So I will tell you, I do have some concerns, primarily because I think, and I'll use as example, you know, the, there's a tendency by staff to always say, oh, we can digest this, we can digest this, we can digest this, oh, let staff do it. And we perpetually run thin, and we perpetually have openings that are either difficult to fill or just simply don't get filled. And I think, much to its own detriment, the staff unduly burdens itself over and over again. I'll use this as a point, that when I heard this, I wasn't happy about, like the, the cleaning service for the wastewater treatment plant and the, and the water plant, that it took us seven months after it was budgeted to get a cleaning service out there, because the mindset was, oh, we can do it. We don't hire janitors, so we shouldn't expect our people to be janitors. They should be expected to be able to go to a nice, clean restroom without having to worry about whether or not, in between their shifts, someone went and cleaned the restroom. The mentality of people have to change. Hire the people to do the work. I'm not advocating hiring more people than you need, but get the people you need to do the work. That, to me, that's part of leadership, and when you don't do that, you're burning out the people, and it leads further to the issues we have with retention, because if you're not paying a market wage, and then you're burning your people out by working them more than they should, you're creating your own problems.
About funding for this particular issue, one of the things that's addressed, it's on fifty-four of the packet, said, where can we get assistance with developing a plan to address SSOs? And the Small Business Administrat, I'm sorry, Small Business and Environmental Assistance Division says we'll be available to assist communities in addressing their SSO problems by furnishing funding sources, guidance on development implementation, and capacity management operation and maintenance program. So there would be, there would be a go-to source for that particular, for that particular part, but did I understand in the beginning, I have a staff's recommendation to proceed with this? Did staff make a recommendation?
Yes, staff is recommending that the board direct the staff to sign the notice of intent. We'll need to put together kind of a package of how we're going to approach it. We're going to express our intent to participate. If the board so chooses, then we may have to budget some money in the engineering line item to get the assistance with the plan. It would also include looking at these types of resources to assist with the development of the plan.
And the estimate on costs of?
Don't have that today. It would be a time and materials sort of basis. You know, we have, we have what we call task order contracts with both of our engineering firms, and I imagine it would fall under that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm with you guys. It kind of worries me, and staff being overburdened, which is a problem. When I first read this, I thought, well, the development of the plan is going to be time, you know, it's going to take a lot of time. Now, could we outsource that, get Tony's help with some other templates that are there, maybe? But then there's implementation of the whole thing, which is significantly more. So I, I guess I'd cautiously proceed, but be interested to see what step two is in terms of what costs we're looking at to develop the plan, number one, and more importantly, what is staff's plan, implementation plan, other than we've got to hire people?
I'll make, I'll make a motion and see where it goes.
Okay.
I move to direct staff to submit TCEQ Form Field Operations Support Division Notice of Intent to Participate in the Sanitary Sewer Overflow Initiative Program.
We have a motion by Vice President Rose to, to direct staff to participate in the Texas Commission of Environmental Control Sanitary Sewer Overflow Program.
I'll second.
Seconded by Secretary of Treasury Flynn. Discussion?
My, the, if, if there is, first of all, there's a, as we've expressed, there's a current concern about the workload, okay? But staff is telling me that they are comfortable moving forward with it at this point. If we move, when we move forward at this point, we, if we hit something and the board decides they don't want to proceed with it any further, we stop, and then the only, the penalty, possible penalty, is that TCEQ could come back at us for SSOs that occurred in that timeframe. If we're not part of the program, they're going to, they're going to get us, they're going to get us, they're going to come back and talk to, they're going to be talking to us about those SSOs anyway. So that, that's kind of like no additional, no additional risk, you put some more effort in, and you showed good intent. I like the idea of preventive maintenance, and part of preventive maintenance is knowing your system, and the requirement of this plan is that we do an evaluation of the system. We have the capability to do that now, and that will be time-sensitive, which me, I mean, it's going, there'll be, not time-sensitive, but that will be additional workload, which really should be done anyway, in my mind. I mean, we should know what the condition of our system is without State Mother telling me to go do it, but this kind of puts more emphasis on it. So that particular part of the aspect doesn't bother me that much. It's just that, you know, it's going to be, what are the, what are the timelines you're allowed to operate in? What's the plan we need to do to get there? They talk about assistance that's available. I'd strongly recommend that we use that assistance. I'm a big fan of, in the plan part, I'm a big fan of plagiarization, huge fan of that. I see little reason to be original.
Benchmark it. We don't plagiarize, we benchmark best practices.
Benchmark, okay, that's good. I'll plagiarize it. So benchmark it. But that, that would be my, that would be my comments. It's an action I take with caution.
And now the discussion. Here and now, everyone remember the motion?
Yep.
All right, all in favor in the cave, I'll raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discuss and possible acts regarding adoption of a amended and restated reserve fund policy. Staff or Secretary of Treasury?
My staff, did I get hired?
I don't think we can afford you, sir.
That would be true.
Hey, one page.
How about that? My love of one-pagers. So if you remember when we were here last month, we talked about our ongoing cash reserve policy. And we put together with Bill Self, actually, there was a four-page document. It was an AWWA guidelines, two pages comparing our proposed current, or our current proposal versus AWA, AWWA guidelines. There was a second comparative. We really focused on the AWWA program because it was most similar to ours. So we've now got it almost identical to our proposal versus AWWA guidelines. Bill's gonna walk us through, you know, some specifics. There's a, uh, document in front of you in terms of the packet itself. But basically, the buckets are pretty simplified, if you will, with caveats underneath, meaning we start with operating reserves, capital reserves, debt service reserves, and rate stabilization reserves. The biggest caveat being under capital reserves, there are some, um, other additional subcategories, if you will. So I think the charge from the board before was simplify. We did that, and, um, I think we're in a place, at least I feel, or maybe he can speak here too as well, we're in a pretty good place with where we're at. So, um, with that, I'll just, that's, set that up, Bill, and we can go through the detail.
Okay. I hadn't expected that handoff. We need to get together and pre-coordinate our presentations. I, I prefer to work, uh, from the red line, um, kinda talk you through what, and maybe as I go through, talk about a little bit that transpired, um, since the last board meeting. The first real set of red lines happens on, uh, section two point zero three, talking about reserve targets. We decided that, uh, in discussion that we would go ahead and develop a, an appendix, which I called an annex and was corrected. An appendix which would have those revert, reserve targets placed in them. And those will be done, uh, I would say at a later date, but they'll be done from now through the rest of this budget cycle. We, uh, there was a question about when, when we would do them and having that item in the document. And so we also added that the reserve targets shall be adopted concurrently with the annual budget, which means we're gonna look at it during the budget cycle. And then we'll adopt them either as part of the budget or as a separate item. Yeah. Sure.
When I look at Appendix A, it seems to have target contributions spelled out.
Those are actually not, those are, those are end, what those would be, the target, the target date and the percent of contribution. And the target contribution, yes. What we're looking at, those target dates are actually the end of the fiscal year. And we, reason we do that is because you wanna end with that amount. If you don't end with that amount, you know you're gonna need to be funding additional, and you would notice that additional funding requirement during the budget development process.
So, and I ask this, just to kinda understand the mechanics of how this works.
Okay.
It says, reserve targets will be adopted concurrently with the budget.
Yes.
And then for a number of the reserve funds, it appears that there's a twenty-five percent per year funding. And so, uh, September of this year, the board's gonna adopt, um, its budget for the next fiscal year. Are you saying that you're gonna come up with a number which is gonna be funded in four installments over the next four years?
Basically, okay, so let's do, let's take our current situation. We do have reserve monies, okay? So what the board really needs to do between now and the end of the fiscal year is to allocate those reserve monies into those particular buckets, however the board determines to do that. That will give us some numbers. The other thing that needs to be done is we need to get a final, what, what's the real target out there? For, and, and this, and the selection of four years to do it was strictly a random, random thing that I did. The board could go five years, the board could go two years, some things may fund before others. All of that is a variable thing that the board could, can change. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I'm still starting with the twenty-five percent.
Okay, the twenty-five percent number would be, if you had, once the total number is determined, let's say it's ten dollars, the total number is ten dollars, then you just go back each, and this is the linear. You would come back and say, three years out, I wanna have seventy-five dollars. I wanna have twenty-five percent of it. Two years out, I wanna, my goal, my target goal is fifty percent of that number. And at the end of the year, my target is twenty-five percent of that number. So you, does that make sense?
Yes, and so, are you saying that number then is, that target is revisited every budget?
You read, you look at this.
The ten dollars or the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five is revisited?
Those, the, probably both, because you can look, one, you're gonna have a target, and each year you're gonna look at this. So you've got, I mean, in the big picture, the hundred dollars could become a hundred and ten.
Where I'm going is, are we setting up a process where essentially this policy has to be amended every budget? I was gonna, asking whether you're gonna revisit the ten dollars every budget year or the twenty-five percent? And since this policy spells out the twenty-five percent, are we creating a process where we're gonna have to revisit this policy every budget?
You're going to need to revisit, you're gonna have to look at the numbers ev- every fiscal year. You're going to look at that because the, the hundred dollar that I used as an example may change. I mean, you may, you may say, okay, yeah, well, that was fine last year. But that number is not, not the correct number. I can see now that four years out, that ten dollars isn't gonna hack the program. I need a hundred and twenty.
I mean, to me, to me, Tony, the way you look at a budget every year, you, you revise the budget every year. This is the policy, I don't know that gets revived, revised necessarily. What does is the, you know, amend, or that the attachment to targets, we're gonna get looked at every year like you would a budget, but I, I don't know that the policy itself gets changed.
Yeah, and I, one of the things that, and I don't know if, if I'm addressing what Tony's raising, but typically a policy is not meant to be changed every year.
Right.
And so if we determine that, let's say that number's twenty-five percent of expenses. And so if our budget is ten million dollars, that's two and a half million. If it's nine million, it goes down. But I, personally, I would not want to be going through this every single year, looking at the reserve policy again. To me, that would indicate.
I agree.
That would, that would indicate that we didn't do it right the first time.
I don't think that's what we're suggesting. I think what we'll look at is the targets, and are they right? Just like you look at a budget. I mean, I don't think the policy.
I think the way Appendix A is prepared, it's going to require you to revisit it every year.
Okay, but that's, you're just looking at targets within, you're not changing the policy, to Greg's point as such.
But if you, so if you put twenty-five percent, so with that twenty, so if we said, so within the policy, we formulate a way where we come up, we say, uh, here it says there's gonna be forty-five days of block. So you have to go back and figure out what forty-five days of that is. So that changes, but the policy doesn't change. The numbers within the policy may change, but the policy doesn't change.
Yes.
And that's why it's in an annex rather than buried in the basic document.
Then we may wanna remove the specific dates from the appendix because, I mean, it spells out the nineteen, twenty, and so three months from now, we'll already be past the first date.
But we will, but we, what we need to do, you're right, but what we need to do is we need to look at the current reserves, what we have, and allocate those out into each one. You know, and it may not be, I mean, the twenty-five percent factor is, is a random. I mean, each, it could be twenty-five, it could be twenty, thirty, the, all of that can change. Is, all of that's a variable at the board's discretion. This is just, that's basically a straw man, seriously, to get.
Yeah, I apologize. The way the previous policy was written, and I actually liked the way it was written specifically as it related to this particular item, is it said, it gave the board a certain number of years to meet the requirement. So let's say we did four years, based on the way this is written. That way, if you have a really, really good year, this year, you may do thirty-five percent. Next year, a little sketchy, maybe you only do ten percent. But if you put twenty-five percent, then, uh, based on the way I think it reads, you're gonna have to adjust, adjust budget-wise to meet that.
These are strictly targets.
So, along those lines, would a simplification be to simply adopt a target, for instance, for the operating reserve of ninety days? Then in connection with each budget, Stephen will tell you how much available money you have, how much we have accumulated that year, and you, as a board in your budget, can say, let's allocate and budget fifty thousand dollars for the operating reserve, 'cause you have one target, which is the ninety days, instead of spelling out in two thousand nineteen, how much is gonna be there in twenty twenty-one? And you just come up with the ultimate target, and then each budget cycle, you can decide how much, he'll tell you where you are relative to the target, and you can decide how much to budget in that budget for that target.
Achieve the target, which would take out the, the, uh, the goal of the twenty-five percent. I mean, like I said, that was, the twenty-five percent was strictly a random from what I'd seen in other documents. I mean, it was just, some of them say three years, some of them say five years, and they all have basically what you see as a number.
I, I can see the benefit of it, 'cause when, if, if Stephen's preparing a plan which is five years looking forward, it gives him some sense, but I think he can also get there if you say, we want a ninety-day reserve.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out a way where you guys don't have to amend your appendix every year, is, is where I'm coming from.
Well, the thing about it is, is you need to look, and it, it needs to be revisited every year.
Absolutely.
And so, uh, we, we, for, take the top one, uh, the very, I mean, the very first one is.
Bill, I would say maybe the policy can be set now, and every year in connection with the budget, you make a budgetary decision as to how much to contribute to each reserve fund as opposed to revisiting the policy each year.
Yeah, I, I would question whether or not it's, the reserve amount needs to be, budget needs to be revisited every year, 'cause for example, I think the town does thirty percent of their budget. I don't know if every year they go back and look at that and say, ah, this year we're gonna do thirty-two percent. Oh, this year we're gonna go do twenty-eight percent. Normally, that number's set, and it's a percentage of it. If it's something small, I mean, I don't think we'd ever come in and say, eh, I think next year we need another twenty K, so let's make it thirty point six. Eh, we lead a little bit in this, we need twenty-nine point four. It pretty much always stays thirty percent or whatever the case might be. So I don't really think it's something that you would change every year, or you would reasonably expect to change it every year. At least that's been my experience.
I just wanted to have that, even today, um, consider the Gatsby quote-unquote reserves. We are budgeting on an annual basis a contribution to reserves as part of the blocking and tackling of that budget-making process. So the staff was supportive of this idea, whatever the appendix looks like or annex, which, whichever word we set along, I was instructive to me, but, um, you know, at the end of the day, um, you know, some things probably have a different sort of target than others. Like the operating reserve seems primary to me. A rate stabilization fund maybe is a secondary but important consideration. So you may wanna get to a hundred percent on one, one of those buckets before others, if that makes sense. So the two things, if it comes up during budget time, um, in the August, September timeframe, we'll have our best view of where we're gonna end up the year, so we can say, yeah, it looks like, you know, our, our revenue projections were conservative, like they always are. We have more revenue than we thought. I guess this year probably won't be like that, but most years, our revenue projection is below our revenue actuals. And that's true on the expense side, too. We, we tend to budget a lot of expenses, and then we're, as the board president noted, we're cheap, and, um, we don't spend all the money that we've budgeted. We don't wanna get in a situation where the board, through its approach, makes us like municipalities where it's like, well, if we don't spend this by the end of the year, we lose it. We're, we're not in that mode today, and we never wanna be there. So, you know, the, whatever that back page looks like, I, I do think there's room to talk about, you know, which ones are the priority, filling up first. And then second, you know, what's the glide path to achieving that goal? So, you know, right now, we have a budgeted contribution to reserves. Stephen tells me that our historical practice is that, like, for this fiscal year, we budgeted a contribution, and that happened in the first month, right? Maybe even in the first day of the fiscal year. Maybe that procedure changes where we say, well, we'll make that contribution towards the end of the year. And, um, you know, then if, you know, if our revenue underwhelmed our projection, then we can back off on that contribution a little bit, um, take a little bit longer to get to our goal.
I mean, it's, it's quite possible. I mean, the operating reserves, for example, it's very possible that we sit down as a board later on and say, what do you want in each bucket? We may decide that we really are more comfortable if we fund the operating reserves at a seventy-five day, seventy-five days rather than the forty-five, which is, which is here. I mean, and, and that would change that entire dynamic. But this, this is just, uh, a loose guide, is what I think probably to move forward. It's easily amended or changed.
I think part of the thing is, we've got like two different documents merged into one here, if I'm understanding.
Three.
Our esteemed lawyer there. Would it make any sense to say, instead of making an appendix to the policy, split this off and make it a budgetary document that is part of the budgetary process?
Yeah.
Not part of the policy? And have the policy reference it as a budgetary document?
Yeah, you, you find that, you, I find that, I find it both ways, as I, you would find, you would find the policy written someplace and go, where are the numbers? And you would go someplace and you'd go into their budget and find their numbers.
Yeah, and that way, the policy can stay set. We don't have to go back to it, and we just put, put this document, what's Appendix A, as part of our budgetary worksheets or whatever.
So.
Does that make sense to our?
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with that approach, if, if.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, 'cause this document says it'll be, if I'm not mistaken, reviewed every two years. But the way it's described, it would be reviewed on a more frequent basis than that.
Yeah, the basic, the basic documents every two years, but the reserves themselves would be done annually. So if we strike, if we remove the appendix, I think is a ba- is that the basic drift of the board? We remove the appendix? Okay, so I'll, I'll scratch, on two oh three, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scratch, reserve targets are shown on Appendix A.
So you're gonna have an app, appendectomy to the document?
Yes.
And, yeah, appendix.
It's laparoscopic.
Oh, jeez. Okay, so that's gonna get rid of that. Yeah, all right, so that takes care of that page, too. All right. Now, uh, okay, so we've, we've discussed that, but the, but the fact that the reserve targets shall be adopted concurrently with the annual budget stays in. Okay. Okay, do you want concurrent, so what verbiage do you want? Adopted concurrently or as a part of the annual budget?
As a part of, 'cause you're, what, what Director Chapman was suggesting, I think, was that there'd be a page in the budget that talks about our reserve, like, performance to date, like, where we are.
Got it.
And then what is our goal for the next year?
Change, to change that sentence to reserve, to say, reserve targets shall be adopted as a part of the annual budget.
Good answer.
Okay, now I'm over on three point zero one. And what happened in three point zero one was we took away the non-spendable reserves. And down on three oh two C, um, boy, I wished I had that document with the, with the title. It's a page and a half long, but anyway. Have you got it? Have you got it? No, this is great.
Let's see if I brought it with me or not.
This is, this is a work project in the future. The document is called Order 2018-06-18B, "An order authorizing the general manager to approve certain expenditures, sign disbursements, and enter into contracts on behalf of the district and containing other matters relating thereto." That document. Okay, so reviewing that document, I found a, a conflict, basically, there was some verbiage in that, and I don't wanna go back and change that document. So I changed the reserve policy to match that document. So C, I struck out the part where it said, "And one board director or two board directors are," and just said, "The general manager is." And, uh, then on the next page, let's see, that is 303C, you'll see an insertion there, and this come out, this, this occurred as a result of Tony's comment about perhaps there are conflicts between documents on what the general manager's authorized expenditures are. And what I found is, in the reserve policy that I had written and taken from AWWA, the standards on what emergency capital reserves could be used for was a tighter verbiage than what was in the title from Forever document. And so, I captured the part out of that document that expanded it, and that is that potentially threaten the health, safety, or welfare of district customers, residents, or employees, and for which immediate corrective action is necessary. That made the two documents parallel. So that's the reason for that change. Okay. On, let's see, fourth, let's see, that's C, C3, uh, we, once again, this is, this was a result of looking at that document and just paraphrasing it back to just saying, "In accordance with district policy," which means, "Go look for the district policy," which is the document with the title from Forever. Uh, 30.
If I could just interject, that was to try to address Tony's concern that there were more than one place, and there is today, where the expenditure authority of staff, particularly the general manager, is defined. And so, trying to get those into one place, so I don't have to go to six different places to figure out whether I'm authorized or not, was the objective of taking that language out.
Yeah, yeah, just saying, basically, go look someplace else. Section 305, Rate Stabilization Reserves Fund, strike the word "fund." And then, on the next page, the non-spendable reserve disappeared. And that's the document. So, if there's, I can, I can make an motion and incorporate those items which change from the basic.
One final question.
Sure.
Then I'll be quiet.
Give me a paragraph number or something.
In 3.02, the paragraph B, the policy references a, a 90-day, what I'll call a reserve fund target, with respect to the operating reserve, with respect to the rehabilitation replacement reserve, it establishes a 1.5% cost target. Then, with respect to equipment replacement reserves, I, there doesn't appear to be a target, nor is there one for the emergency capital reserves. The debt service reserve will be established by the bond covenants, the bond resolutions themselves. And then, the rate stabilization reserve, again, has the 30% target. So my question is whether, as a matter of policy, does the board wanna specify targets for equipment replacement reserves and emergency capital in the same way that it does for the other reserves?
Or perhaps take 'em all out and include those as part of the budget.
So in other words, it establishes targets for some of the reserves, but not others?
Well, the equipment replacement reserves is based on the depreciation schedule.
I would challenge that, because you have the accounting depreciation schedule, it's different from the actual expected useful life of a piece of equipment. So the accounting rules will mandate that it, you can only depreciate this over this period, or you have to depreciate, like this building. You have to depreciate a building over 30 years. Well, we're not gonna rebuild another building in 30 years. And so I think there are some differences in there where it may not always accurately represent it.
The definite.
To add to that topic, we can't use a depreciation schedule, because anything that's contribution, it's not gonna be on the depreciation schedule, so it won't actually be on our assets, just 'cause it's, because we hadn't actually spent anything, so there's nothing to depreciate. So we might only have half the assets actually being depreciated, because the other ones were developer contributions, which aren't on the depreciation schedule, so we can't go off of that.
But I think Tony's general comment is, we need or should have targets in every area, like we do in a couple, or not have them anywhere, to Carmen's point and reference something else, it's a consistency issue, right?
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of having the targets, so, I mean, that just gives you where, where you're gonna go.
I don't think we were suggesting removal of the targets, just perhaps to put them in the same budget document, like the A, A, Appendix Annex document that would be brought up. So here's the target, here's where we are relative to the target in the current fiscal year, and here's the budgetary actions staff is recommending to the board for what we do relative to the reserve next fiscal year.
Which gets back to Greg's point of keeping this as clean as possible, and the desire not to have to look at this and change it, you know, every single year.
Yeah, and, and this brings in just a definitional thing between A, B, and C, on the rehabilitation replacement reserves, equipment replacement reserves, and emergency capital reserves. So, the, the first one, the rehabilitation and replacement reserves is replacing items, it's a reserve for items that wear out, uh, too fine, to be precise with what's stated, unplanned or accelerated infrastructure rehabilitation. Basically, something wears out before you anticipate it. The equipment reserves replaces things that wears out when you anticipate it. And then, emergency capital is unanticipated emergencies. So my, I'm wondering if A and C aren't redundant or inclusive of each other? Because essentially, if we have a item that wears out ahead of schedule, then that would likely constitute an emergency. So I'm wondering if we're not duplicating our reserves by doing A and C. I realize there are some things that may wear out, um, that is, um, but if it's material to the district, then it's going to be an emergency. I mean, if we, it's gonna be, if it's small, we wouldn't be reserving for it. If it's major, if it's something that's significant enough, where it's included in our reserves, it's likely that it's gonna be an emergency if it no longer worked. So to me, it seems like we very well could be double counting.
No, disagree. You look at the end of the second, the end of the first sentence, it says, "Or when a utility desires to accrue for its future rehabilitation and replacement needs on a pay-as-you-go basis."
But how does that change the, how does that change the overall definition? So if we think about, think of any item that we would have, that would be, uh, that we reserve for, so if it wore out prior to weeks, prior to what we expected, my guess is, it's something that we need. And if we couldn't function without it, my guess is that probably be an emergency. And so, help me understand a practical example, how those things would be?
Okay.
Okay.
I've got a water line.
Okay.
It's running from here to the elevated storage tank.
Mm-hmm.
And it's brand new.
Okay.
I expect it's gonna have a useful life of 50 years.
Mm-hmm.
So I start setting aside funds at this point to replace that water line. I've started setting them aside, I'm three years in.
Mm-hmm.
It breaks.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna use my emergency fund to repair it.
Correct.
So that's why you would have the two different, the two different funds. And that you would be setting aside, and we do, we do set aside now, like, $200 for water and $200 for sewer, a year, for basically pay-as-you-go.
That's correct, approve about $200,000, yes.
$200,000, I think, yeah, $200,000.
I think, to me, you proved my point, because if that line, if that line goes, that's ahead of schedule. That's an emergency. So to me, if you did accrual for that line and the rehabilitation and replacement, and you also did a, a, a reserve for it in the emergency, you're doing, you're reserving twice for the same item.
But in one case, I'm reserving for a total asset replacement. In the other case, I'm reserving just to fix a particular problem that occurs on it, on that unit. That's why you have two of them.
Basically, the best way I would say this is, is the emergency fund, once it hits a certain percentage or certain amount, we would stop, but the replacement side or the rehabilitation is gonna keep going every year, we're just gonna keep adding to it, because something eventually is gonna give advice, in a way of looking at it.
Now, back to Tony's question about, which ones did you say we need that we didn't have, uh, some sort of target, targeting system?
I think for the equipment replacement and the emergency capital.
Okay.
What, what?
I don't.
You pondering that?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think if there weren't some in there at one time, and they've come out, but...
While you're pondering that, let me throw out another question. So on our rate stabilization reserve, uh, it's a means to provide to meet the reserve requirement, um, and this is for unanticipated fluctuation in revenue shortfalls. Given that we review this on, uh, twice a year, so we do it when we set our budget in October, and we look at it again in February, isn't that the opportunity to address, like we did this year, revenue shortfalls?
Correct.
But it, what it, the reason for that is to prevent rate shock. You may have a significant budget shortfall, and you don't wanna hit your customers with a large rating crease to cover the shortfall like we're gonna have this year, because we're so far behind on our water sales. So you don't wanna hit 'em with a, a big rate change, so you have reserves available to feed in, and then you replace those reserves over a period of time.
But I think even with our revenue shortfall, I don't think we're running negative.
Well, yeah, but that's because we're, we're.
Say that again?
I'd say, I'd said, even with our revenue shortfall being, I think, a million light in revenue, we're still, our net income is still positive.
And that would be.
And that's a 10% reduction, and this is probably, what, one of the wettest years on record?
I don't know about that, but I can answer your, I can make your point, I, I can make your point, because we just talked about earlier how we're understaffed, and those positions are feeding in that benefit of not being an expense. So that offsets our decreased rate, our decreased revenue requirements. So if you were fully staffed, you would be looking at a little bit different situation.
There, there are several aspects when it comes to that. Uh, as, as managers, as staff, we have an understanding of what revenue we have right now. There are some expenses we have postponed, uh, and a potential of postponing for the whole year, and maybe pushing it forward to the next fiscal year, knowing of a shortfall for revenue. Uh, it does help having, obviously, or, I guess it helps in a way, having some positions not filled, um, but i- it's our job as, as, as staff to understand and be cautious with our revenue source when we know it's low, to do what we can to pitch a penny if we have to, to try to keep it low.
Yeah, but the point is, you are postponing things that we could have or should be doing because of shortfall in revenue, right? I mean, you're managing it fiscally responsibly. That's great. But, the other side of the coin is, we're not doing the things that we had hoped or planned for because of it.
That's correct.
Basically robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, I would, I'm, the things, for example, that we postponed, I know one of the things was redoing an AV in here. If we do that next year, I don't think the district is going to be harmed. I, I would hope the staff is, um, considers, you know, if we're talking about preventive maintenance out in the field, that's probably not something that you wanna delay. If it's upgrading the AV in here, that's kinda no harm, no foul. Uh, so, from my conversations with staff, I haven't seen them delaying or putting off projects that would, uh, that I would say would be reckless, or that would subject the district to likely greater costs because of delaying that expenditure. So I think they've been very good at being appropriately selective in the projects that they, uh, delayed.
That's correct. We're not postponing anything that's gonna negatively affect any of the customers out there, or our water system or sewer system. You know, we're postponing some items that were, you know, were approved, that were in looking for the future to help benefit, rather be more efficient, as far as, you know, AV room stuff that'd be a little bit easier for the transparency, or a little more to understand for the customer base. But, for the most part, we're taking care of everything that needs to be taken care of. Um, and then, you know, you have stuff like the water, obviously, Fort Worth, if we're not selling it, we're not buying in there as much. We have, you know, systems not being run as much, you have less chances of breakdowns, and less, you know, repairs that had to be done throughout the year, so. There's a lot of different aspects when we look at it, but as management, we whistled down to make sure where we are and understand it.
Yeah, 'cause I think the biggest portion of our costs is gonna relate to actual water purchase. So as Bill Rose would always say, "If you're not selling it, you're not buying it, uh, you're not using electricity to transport it."
Correct.
Uh, so, by virtue of having a light water year, your costs will naturally drop significantly, uh, just because you don't have to purchase it. And all of my questions really raised, come up around, I think, the way it's written, that if we do this, we may over-reserve, and that's the one concern that's kinda sticking in the back of my mind. It'll probably make more sense when we put numbers to it to see where we are versus uh, what we actually reserve. But the way it looks, it seems like there's a possibility that we could over-reserve. And, uh, as much as I think, uh, it's absolutely important to make sure that we have appropriate reserves, so we don't have to make poor decisions and put off required maintenance if we have a light year. I'm also very sensitive to not setting aside too much of, uh, our customers' money in reserve, uh, because I think there is a concern with doing that as well. Yes, sir?
I may have some answers for Tony's questions. And, it's about as clear as mud. For the equipment replacement reserves, there is not, at this time, a number. And that, and the reason, and, there's not a number. You have to read it, understand the purpose, and then go from that point. I can't do a percentage of any particular factors, because there are a lot of little points, data points along the line for emergency replacement reserves. So you go back to the purpose, and this is, you know, when we get the asset management up and running, then we'll be able to have a number and know what we've got. But the purpose of the emergency replacement reserves is to accumulate the probable replacement cost of equipment each year over the life of the asset. Okay? So you have to know what your assets are, and how long they're gonna, how long they're going to exist before you can determine what that desired number is. Okay? So it's, it's a spreadsheet. So that's the answer to that particular question. Okay, for the emergency capital reserve funding, all right, it's based on the historical records and experience of the utility in dealing with such emergencies and disasters. So, here again, there is not a number that today I can say it's... So here again, there is not a number that today, I can say it's a hundred percent of any, any particular factor. I have to go back and say, what's, what's my exposure? And once I determine, and once the board determines what that exposure is, then we can determine how much of an emergency capital reserve. I mean, as I think back, the worst thing that's occurred since I've been associated with the mud was the aerial sewer line that broke out there, and that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do you remember what the aerial sewer line, I mean, that was one number.
About two hundred thousand dollars.
Two, two hundred, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand.
That, and that doesn't include the fine, which was another hundred K.
Fifty thousand, but we re-hold a manhole.
My point was, that's, as I looked at the historical background on it, that's what I would have, and then I'd have to say, well, okay, that's historical, what's the worst thing that happened to me with my wastewater treatment plant? I mean, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'm going to have insurance to begin with. So I don't have to plan on having a replacement fund, emergency fund, to cover replacement of that plan. But I need to have something that will carry me till I get my insurance funds in and can use those funds to work an issue that might happen at the plant. You know, we have an earthquake here, and a water tower topples over. I gotta have, it's going to cost me a bunch of money to replace that water tower, well, it's going to be covered with, it's going to be covered by insurance, I hope. That would be my thought process, but in the interim, I need to have working capital and funds to work that particular issue. So it's one of these things that the board's going to have to wrestle with, and I grant you that it's going to be a best guess on the part of the board to come up with a particular number that we want, that we're comfortable with, and how we want to fund it, and, you know, if it's laid out that way over, over four years, how we want to build to it. But it's, it's a number that I think we should have, but we need to wrestle with the issue.
I just would add that this year, this fiscal year, the restoration work on the exposed sewer line in the creek over by Skyline and Creek Mirror ended up being with engineering and construction costs on the order of sixty, seventy thousand dollars. It's not something you planned for, but we had to come and ask the board for the money to get that fixed. And we got it, and you guys did what you had to do to amend our budget and get that to us, but it came out of our undifferentiated reserve at the end of the day, and it came along with the question like, why haven't you done this already?
And we had, yeah, and we had the issue on, you know, water, water in the house, so.
I'd also like to address the bit about, where you're concerned that we might be double dipping, or over allocating and that stuff. Well, that's what the adjustment's for. If we go, okay, it's thirty, thirty, and we go, whoa, we basically doubled up there, well, reduce from fifteen to fifteen. We're just basically talking about buckets here, and we can adjust those buckets. It's just, the difference in the buckets is just what the funds are supposedly going for, and we can adjust those, you know, shuffle those. And I don't like to use the word shuffle, but reallocate or readjust what those reserves are so that we don't overallocate or overreserve money.
So the question is, what's the ask? Is it to, is it to approve what we have here? Or is it to approve? Is, is that the ask to?
I'm, I'm, I will make a motion, and I will, I will make the changes to wipe out the appendix A in it that I noted in the, that I noted as I went along.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, the, the motion is to approve this. If you're not comfortable with that, then we're going to need direction as to what's next.
What do you got there? An extra comma, oh. No, I put that, I, I, I noted commas, I noted to use a sprinkler across the piece of paper, and where the pepper lands, that's where commas go. So it depends upon whose comp, composition you're using when you do that stuff. Okay, so I'm going to move, I will move, I'm going to, I move. I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen zero seven twenty-two, adopting the cash reserve policy with the following changes. On section two point zero three, strike, reserve targets are shown in appendix A, and change the last sentence to read, reserve targets shall be adopted as a part of the annual budget. And that would also, and also the elimination of appendix A.
We have a motion by Vice President Rose to approve resolution number twenty nineteen zero seven twenty-two, adopt the cash reserve policy with the following modifications, which were under two dot oh three reserve, two dot three, reserve targets, striking reserve targets as shown in appendix A, and modifying the following sentence to read, reserve targets shall be adopted as part of the annual budget. And finally, striking appendix one, document, appendix A.
Second.
We have a second by Secretary of Treasury Flynn, any other discussion? Here are none, all in full.
All approved indicate by raising your hand.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number five, considering take appropriate action regarding candidate search for general manager, Director Caston Way, and Secretary of Treasury Flynn. A, receive report and recommendation for recruitment and retention subcommittee, and B, approve contract with executive search firm. Director Caston Way, Secretary of Treasury Flynn.
Let me give a kick at it, Kelly. So the committee, or subcommittee, or subcommittee of the committee, met this week. First of all, the three of us, including Carmen, to talk about the two recommended firms that we had, that Carmen brought forth to take a look at this search for our general manager. We then had a conversation, about a half hour, with each of them, sort of an interview. We got significant, both of them gave a very detailed proposal on what their services would be. Very detailed in both cases, impressive in terms of what they were going to bring forth. So our goal then was to ask a lot of questions about each proposal, which we did. It came down to us being fairly comfortable, or actually really comfortable, with either of, of the two. We have decided to move forward with the Mercer Group, which was one of the, the proposals, for a number of reasons. They are very detailed. I think we were impressed with our gentleman's knowledge of this mud operation. He was, had viewed a couple of the past meetings, knew that we were talking about it, knew there was some discussion. So we thought he was a little more buttoned up, maybe, in terms of knowing the mud. Has a lot of experience in the area of general manager, specifically with utility districts, that was impressive. His cost structure, their cost structure was a little bit less than the other one, another factor. One of the things we liked the most was if, for what, both of them had a hundred and eighty day, if, if the candidate is hired, and then within a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty days they leave, there's a policy to address that. The firm we did not select was, it was a thirty percent second charge, if you will. And these guys, the ones we did go with, Mercer was just travel costs. So if, God forbid, somebody is selected and they leave, they'll go back at it with just travel costs. So for all of those reasons, we decided to go with the Mercer Group. And Carmen, in the packet, did they get this milestone of the recruitment schedule?
It's with the packet that was at the dais.
Okay, okay, so if you, if you, well, let me walk through this real quickly and then take questions. So again, in July, we talked about approving the contract with the recommended recruiter. That being said, there's probably a couple of things that we want to go back and look at, that we maybe want to change a little bit in terms of what was initially submitted, in terms of their proposal. So we'll get a different kick at the can there. Then we move into August, work with the board and staff to develop a recruitment criteria and commencement, and commence recruitment, this is a big piece. Probably the, one of the most significant pieces, they come out here, they spend time with the staff, they spend time with the board, the, the subcommittee, talking about exactly what it is we're looking to do from a, from a manager standpoint, what they do, job responsibilities, interviewing staff, all that kind of stuff. September through October then is the actual recruitment period, of when they go out and start looking at, you know, filling the position. November finalize the candidates in the first review, December, interview a shortlist candidate, negotiations with pervert candidate, all with the intent of by July, or by January first, having a candidate in place. Both firms were comfortable with that timeline. Basically, it's a hundred and twenty days-ish, so to speak, and both of them felt that they could, that was reasonable.
I have a question, can you walk through the cost structure for Mercer Group versus
Yeah.
the other firm, what's the name of the firm that was not selected?
SGR.
SGR, SGR, they're, I'll go by memory here, but their total cost was thirty thousand dollars, which was five thousand dollars more than Mercer Group. Mercer Group was twenty-five, five upfront, and twenty-five at the end.
That was SGR?
That was Mercer. SGR was thirty thousand, and it was paid in three equal increments of ten thousand dollars, sort of ten upfront, ten at another gate, if you will, can't remember exactly where that was, and then ten at the end. So another advantage was, you're going to be into it, into the process, maybe twenty grand with SGR. If something goes wrong, you're not happy, I wasn't as comfortable, I don't think we were with that cost layout, as opposed to, if you're ninety days down the road, you're really only out five grand with Mercer Group, which was another, we thought, benefit.
Go ahead, thank you.
I think, I went, I've just gone back, trying to look at the lines of authority here with the, with the, with the group. I think that the board needs to see that contract and approve that contract. I pulled the motion back up, authorized Director Flynn, Director Castway to work, to work, start initial discussions with recruiters between now and the next meeting, and to bring suggestions and a timeline back to the board. We've got suggestions and a timeline, but I think the board's going to have to approve the contract.
Carmen, how do you want to address that? I mean.
We do it here, we could do it in exec session, I, you know.
I guess my thought was that, I mean, we shared a draft contract from, from the selected firm with our attorney. So he's seen the kind of blank contract form. Their proposal did have one additive alternate that we're not going to select, that's my understanding, based on the subcommittee, the committee's discussion. And that the direction we were looking for was to say, okay, committee, the board directs staff and legal counsel to finalize the contract, which we, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a hundred thousand dollar contract, but we direct staff and counsel to finalize that contract and get them started. That, that is the, the approval of the contract, if you will. Now, we can share that contract with you, it's not a big deal. He sent us a, kind of a, none of the forms were filled out, but here's your blank contract. So it's the one that they use to engage their clients. You know, our attorney hasn't had a chance to chime in on that, but, you know, usually you'd want to say that. For the small of a contract, I don't anticipate they're going to be interested in, you know, a bunch of time from their attorney going through a contract modification, so.
Was Tony looking at it or swindled?
It's entirely up to the board, the governing body, if you want to review it and approve it, that's up to the board. If you want to delegate it, that's up to you too.
Total amount of the contract was how much?
Twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, there's a couple of things we want to revise, number one, which we'll do. Then I think it needs to go to Tony or somebody to finalize the, you know, to have the eyes cross the t's and get it all legallyed up and agreed upon. If there's a step there that people want to look at it, okay, I don't know what. If you're looking for further input from the board to, for what purpose, I don't know, but, I mean, if it's an informational thing, certainly.
My feeling was that if the board just listened to the report of the subcommittee, they'd be in a position to say, okay, go forward, work with the selected consultant, get the contract finalized, and get started. Now, that first period of time, one thing Steve didn't mention was that they, he had actually asked the question, both of them did, or maybe, maybe it was more of a reference to their process, but they would anticipate talking to all of the board members. We're still trying to work around, you know, the open government meeting hack stuff. So some of that would probably end up being one-on-one interviews with the other board members. So he'd schedule a day to come up, we, you know, we'd probably have some phone conversations with the committee, and he, as we worked through some of those details, but he was going to ask for input from the staff as well. What do they see is important in the next general manager's role? Those kind of things would come up, so I would just add that. But my notion was that if we brought it today, that's the reason why we worked through the interviews last Thursday, trying to get this on the agenda, was that y'all could just direct the staff and council to execute the necessary documents in conjunction, in support of the subcommittee, that, that was my notion.
Any other questions, Tom, if not entertain a motion?
Just one thing, when it comes down to interviews and that stuff, realize we have EEO and all kinds of things. If you don't know how to do an interview in today's world, to keep you from getting sued, don't volunteer to do the interviews.
Yeah, the last time we had all directors participate in the interview, and we were properly advised by staff of what we should and should not say, and there were some directors that disregarded that information. Said things that should not have been said, so it wasn't a staff issue.
I, I think that we'll be able to handle the interview process a little bit better this time than what occurred last time, because we all did not meet the candidate and ask the same questions.
I'm just bringing it up, because I have seen some real doozies out there.
My, my concern is just whether I can delegate to a a subcommittee to execute a contract.
Whether or not you can, or whether or not you feel comfortable doing it, I think those are two different questions.
I was thinking can, can, that's a legal question.
Yes, the full board, you're properly posted for it, and the board can author, approve, and authorize either an individual director or your general manager to approve a contract. Again, it comes down to whether you're comfortable doing so, or entirely up to the board.
Do we have a motion?
We do. So I would move to approve an action, the action regarding the candidate's search, to move forward, to, to approve the proposal as we outlined, which means signing a contract with legal input to the, you know, to the contract itself at the direction of the subcommittee.
And for control purposes, I would say with the compensation not to exceed the amounts.
Oh, with compensation not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
So we have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to direct staff and the recruitment committee to proceed with the agreement with the Mercer Group not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars and execute that contract with legal guidance, or legal input. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Secretary, I mean, by Director Chapman, are there any other discussion?
In the original motion, did you say Mercer Group?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's actually called a little something, but Mercer Group is what they presented us, but
Okay.
the actual, Carmen, they may say something, a little Mercer something, but. The, the actual, Carmen, they may say something, a little Mercer something, but.
The, the name of the group that we're contracting with is a subsidiary of the Mercer. Staff Resources Limited or something like that. We'll get it right.
Any other questions, discussion? Here are none, all in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes reluctantly unanimously.
I was going to say, that was a pretty slow motion. Someone's to wave.
Can someone check Director Rose, make sure he wasn't having a stroke?
Just not accustomed of. Not doing something with a contract that I haven't seen.
Well, we can have him, uh, have Tony send it out, once it's, uh, send it out to the board and, uh, and if there's any particular issues, they give you hard burn or concern, you can send your feedback back.
I thought we had. Can we take a break?
Oh, would you like to take a break?
I'd like to take a break.
It's, uh, eight to eight, we'll recess for five minutes. It is now eight-ten and, uh, the mud one will return back to regular session. Item number six, consider and take appropriate action to appoint two directors to serve on a committee to work with the Town and Trophy Club. Uh, representative regarding the sale or exchange of district real property located one hundred Municipal Drive and fifteen oh one Junction Way.
I thought we decided this at last month's meeting and.
Thought we did too.
Did, and did a subcommittee?
I think we did it in closed session, that's the problem, so.
Uh, okay.
So we have to put what we did in closed session and open session. So is there, someone has a motion?
We didn't do it in closed session.
Well, we, we dis, there was some discussion about appointing, yeah. Thank you for keeping us out of trouble. But if there's someone who has to go to jail, we nominate Director Rose to serve, he'll serve honorably for us.
Okay. First of all, we need to decide who's going to be the players, I would like to play.
I would like to play.
And I think I was the other one.
Yeah. I don't know if we can have three people that play, you can't have three people that play. Yeah, then you couldn't have a meeting. So, me too. So we have to drop a player.
What are you looking at me for? I'm not in it.
If you two want to, I'll drop. Okay. Guys know what you're doing. You've been at it longer.
Theoretically.
I request you not go that far. You've been at it longer.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to appoint President Wilson and Vice President Rose to serve on a strategic partnership committee. To work with the Town and Trophy Club representatives regarding the sale or exchange of district real property located at one hundred Municipal Drive and fifteen oh one Junction Way.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Rose to appoint President Wilson and Vice President Rose to serve on, eh, on the strategic partnership committee. To work with the Town and Trophy Club, uh, town council representatives regarding the sale or exchange of district real property located one hundred Municipal Drive and fifteen hundred and one Junction Way.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Director Caston Way, uh, any other discussions? Here are none, all in favor indicate by raising your hand. Uh, we have Director Rose, Director Castaway, Director Chapman, President Wilson, voted yes.
All opposed?
Secretary of Treasury Flynn? Motion passes four to one. Item number seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding the June twenty nineteen combined financials and variance report. A, combined financials, B, combined variance.
Uh, I would just, uh, guide you once again to one forty-seven, which is the variance report. As I am obligated to do now for the fifth straight month. Talk about, um, our concerns with water, obviously revenue is down, we know expenses are down somewhat commensurate with that. But still in all, forty-five percent at this point in time is concerning. I know, we all know, we're coming into the season where we're going to be selling a lot more water, but, um, it's been by all measures, an extremely wet year. But it is what it is and hopefully expenses will continue to offset that, uh, most, if not all of that lost revenue. Nothing else that I saw in the variance reports really jumps out of significant dollar amounts anyway.
Okay, um, I'd like to hear your perspective on, um, comment was made earlier regarding staff delaying, uh, some capital and or, uh, OpEx, uh, expenses. Would you concur with, uh, my view that the things that are being delayed are reasonable?
I agree with the comment. Doesn't change the fact that we are delaying things, that, and I, I never did I say that they were critical things we're delaying.
No.
I'm just, and, and I, I agree that we should be doing that. I wish we don't, we're not in that position, but we're not.
I, I honestly do think that things have hurt us delay. I think we could fund it out of reserves and it would not create a burden, uh, a material burden on the district if we chose to go forward with it.
I wouldn't recommend that, but.
I wouldn't recommend it either.
No, I, we could.
I said we could.
Yeah, we could.
Just because you can, don't make it a good idea. Any other questions, discussions?
If not, then I move to, um, approve the combined, two not, two thousand nineteen June combined financials and variance report. A, combined financials, B, combined variance.
We have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to approve the twenty nineteen, June twenty nineteen combined financial and variance report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Caston Way, any other discussion?
Here are none, all in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously, okay. Item eight, uh, receive report from directors that attend the AWBD, is this a carryover from last time?
Uh, yes, and basically, uh, I'm not going to take a lot of time doing it. That's the important part that I picked up out of the AWBD board meeting was the legislative stuff.
Yeah, then you do, then we do this last time?
No, we weren't agended for it, so that'll, uh, I think with, I discussed those issues, I had some stuff that I brought back and I, I've given to the operations manager. Just on equipment type things, uh, some, some pamphlets, some folders, that type of stuff.
Okay.
That can conclude my report.
Thank you, Vice President Rose. Anything else? Item number nine, receive update from budget committee, uh, Secretary of Treasury Flynn and Vice President Rose.
I'll let Secretary of Treasury speak.
I'm not sure what the update is, other than we've met as a subcommittee or committee of the subcommittee committee. Um, we are moving along, I think where we're at is, we're in pretty good shape. I think later we're going to talk about fire department issues, which is something that we didn't really spend a lot of time in the budget because we had just gotten that. But I think there's some issues probably that we're going to be discussing later on that, as it will impact the budget.
Roger?
Okay, uh, item number ten, general manager monthly reports and updates. A, capital update, B, and following capital improvement projects, uh, C, staff improvement retention updates, D, water system operations, E. Waste water system operations and F, finance update. Uh, General Manager Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief, um, items under A and B, regulatory update and capital improvement projects update are in your board pack. And I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have, or, um, if I don't know the answer, which is always possible, uh, we have Mike and Steve here to help us with that. If not, um, I do want to bring to your attention, just a short item, wrote on item C, staff recruitment and retention update. Um, in our last board meeting, we had, um, uh, what's the word, a ranging discussion on everything from, uh, the process of recruitment for the new general manager for the district. To, uh, some of the challenges we've been having in both recruiting and retaining new employees. Um, there was, um, a question asked of the district attorney as to whether or not we could, um, institute programs like signing bonuses or, um, provide training to new employees. And, um, in the contract for employment, provide some form of, the term I'm going to use a clawback provision, so that if we trained someone up that, and they, uh, skip out the door, that we have some ability to pull that money back that we had invested in them. Um, Tony assures me that that can in fact be done, um, but short of, I'm asking him to write up that around a program that does not yet exist, I asked him to hold off on that. Um, we have been having some discussion at the staff level with Tarrant County Community College representatives. Who run the, um, the water and wastewater, um, operators program. It's, uh, our understanding that this program is primarily taught at the Marine Creek Extension Campus of TCC. And the typical cost to get through the program and get all the training necessary to become a certified operator in water or wastewater is about two thousand dollars, two thousand two hundred. Um, so that leaves open the door to, um, strengthening our relationship with TCC, it's fairly close by. Um, you know, I, I, in, in my mind, um, you know, it, it provides the possibility for starting an internship program where people going through that program can come and work with us. Get a chance to test drive them and potentially, um, to take, um, operators there who don't yet have proper certifications, run them through that program. So, um, we're not ready with any form of a, like a contract yet because the program with which it would support is not, it's not available today. Um, but we are working on that, I, I wanted to share that with the board.
I, I would say, I think I was the one that made the comment about asking if it was possible to do that. I was not aware that the program was twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, I think we'd likely burn up two thousand dollars in legal fees in attempt to co, create a program. So I think the other alternative, have we identified why we're having issues maintaining the staff, maybe we're focusing on the wrong thing?
Um, certainly one of the things that, um, I shared, um, with our, what I'm calling our, um, retention and recruitment committee, Kelly and Steve. Was a, um, a comment that came back from the folks at Tarrant County Community College relative to our entry level pay. So our board in early twenty eighteen adopted the salary survey data that came back from Seagull Waters. For, um, the role that we currently call utility field worker, and it's the same role in both water and wastewater side of the house. And we do strive to cross train our folks. The upper end of the range is very comparable to Grapevine, to South Lake, to the, to the utilities that surround us. The bottom end of that range is low by more than ten percent. And, um, uh, you can anticipate that we'll bring back a proposal to, um, fix that, um, kind of deficiency, right? So, um, what, what we've heard is that, um, I want to say the number's around seventeen dollars an hour is the minimum entry level for operators over in Grapevine. And our beginning of the range starts well below that.
Uh, when you say well below that, can you clarify what that means?
So I, I want to, I, I don't have the number in front of me, but let's say, um, let's say that for a entry level operator in the town of Grapevine, it's thirty-six thousand dollars. Ours is more like twenty-nine.
So about seven thousand dollars difference. How many people do we have that fit this category on our staff?
About two-thirds of our staff is in that area, although some of them are now senior operators, so we have some classification that allows some of our more tenured folks to move up into a higher level of classification. Um, we, I, my opinion is that we need to fix the bottom of that range. Now, doing so, um, we'll probably take some of our newer operators and put them below the range. So for people that we have on staff now, we may have to, um, make a correction to get them where they need to be. That's probably in our best interest anyway, to ensure their long-term retention. Um, but we're just not prepared to give it to you tonight with a recommendation.
So when you say majority, five, six people, would you say would be possibly impacted by this?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
I would, I would probably say that five or six, and they're probably tenured employees.
So five or six at seven thousand dollars, that's thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. How many positions do we have that's not field?
Three. Three?
And on average, how many positions do we pretty much have open at any one time, because it seems like.
Three.
I don't, I would say, I mean, it really has been two, we rotated out.
We did rotate out one, so we've had two, I think, for the last two to three years.
Yeah, I would say we're, we're running about a year and a half, good solid two positions open.
Again, that is talking about operators only, we're not referring to the communications role, which is the three Stephen was talking about.
Yeah, so it's, it's one on the operations side, uh, we've had, you know, on both sides of the house, one will come open, we've had people switch, um, you know, as we fill the wastewater superintendent role. Uh, so we've had some movement, uh, in rotating a position there, but on, on average, we've got one pretty much the last couple of years. Now, we did at one time fill them, uh, then shortly after that, due to circumstances, uh, that the district couldn't, couldn't do anything about, uh, you know, we, the position opened back up and then it's been rotating since then.
To me, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense, give everybody a seven, eight K raise. Some I think will be able to stomach forty K on a ten million dollar budget to avoid having to revolve and door and staff. I would venture to guess we're probably spending that in just the recruitment and lost productivity, et cetera.
Well, I'll say, I think one of our biggest challenges is even getting people through the door, I mean, even getting people to come interview. And we don't even get them in the door to even interview, to even offer them a position or.
In all of our postings, you know, everything, the, the pay gets posted out there, every, every interview's out there, we put the range out there. Uh, we've had, you know, several interviews, usual, we'll get them a handful at a time and do the interviews. Uh, there's been a trend that even during the interview process, you know, obviously the, uh, they're, they're currently looking and actively looking. And we've lost several of them to just during the interview process, either the next day, the day before, taking positions and moving. So we've actually expedited our interview process and hiring process to get them in the door. Uh, we fill, just currently filled a role, within two weeks, lost it to another person that was offering more, uh, amount that we couldn't, I mean, we couldn't match.
Do we have to put the range?
Everybody else does.
Do we have to put the range? Or can we put a, a marketing range?
I mean, the range is on our website, on the job posting and it's on the, eh, on our website with the position and it's on the job posting, but we can take it out, but, I mean, to be all honest.
It probably raised more questions.
Yeah, I mean, and then you have that, eh, we, then we'll spend more staff time getting them in the door, then they're not even going to do anything with it after that. We'll spend more time just doing interviews that aren't going anywhere, what they're expecting, you know, one and a half times what we offer, I mean, these things are going to happen.
That seems nuts over seven, eight grand.
Say that again, Greg.
I say that seems nuts over seven or eight grand to have people.
What's our starting pay for that position?
So that position, uh, the position used to be, it used to be at that time, now it's moved up to thirty-three.
No, but what's the hourly wage?
Twenty-three seventy-nine.
Twenty-three seventy-nine?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eighteen, eighteen, eighty-six, sorry. Sorry, wrong one.
Eight, so for our starting guy.
Fifteen, yeah, just shy of sixteen.
And Grapevine starts people and their, theirs is the standard is sixteen eighty-nine an hour and we're paying fifteen what?
Eighty-six.
Okay, so there's a, you guys got to understand, there's a lot of different ranges here, if somebody comes as a licensed operator, we have a range for that. If they come in the street and say, hey, I've worked for a few plumbing companies before, but I like to go into this, but you're going to have to train me and incur this expense. Well, we're going to bring them in, it's less because we have to license them. So there's, we have a couple of different ranges, everybody just doesn't. So there's, we have a couple of different ranges. Everybody just doesn't fall into the one bucket.
How long is that class?
Um, I, I don't have that answer today. I, I guess my main point of putting it here, I, I know there was interest on the part of the board to get us in a place where, you know, we're paying, we're paying a fair wage for the work being done that's commensurate and comparable to the surrounding communities that we compete with. I mean, we're not, we're not competing with utilities in Houston here, uh, for operator type roles. The, the job shed, if you will, like a watershed, is smaller. Um, people aren't gonna relocate, um, for the sort of wages we pay an operator. But that said, um, we are struggling, because we're kind of at the bottom end of that range. And, um, I intend to bring back a package with a lot of that data, uh, prepared for you. I just, um, my main reason for including it here was that, um, you know, we'd kind of asked Tony whether or not we could do that last time, and it didn't make sense to me to spend, um, his time doing that, when we didn't have an underlying program to contract with.
Yeah, I, given that it's twenty-two hundred dollars, I don't think that is enough to justify, in my opinion, paying below market. I think it's all you're gonna do is get a person in, train them, and then have them leave three months later. Uh, and then, to me, it's, you know, if it was fifty percent of the salary, it may be worth it, but given that it's two grand, it's probably worth it to just pay them market wage, regardless of how they come in, with the hopes that they'll stay. I mean, because I, I don't think what we're doing is the answer. I'd be open to hear the views of others.
Uh, we talked about the bonus upfront. You know, for somebody who's making, you know, that kind of range of money, a bonus is a pretty attractive, potentially, item. And if you have a clawback provision of some sort that you get it back over some period of time, maybe that's an angle we look at as well. Maybe it's some variation of a bonus upfront, but not, you know, fully getting to the, in this case, thirty-six thousand dollar range, something.
Seems like just paying a market wage would do it.
Maybe.
See, one of the issues what we ran into when we did this, this comp study is, uh, we, we, like, as Carmen said before, we basically compared ourselves to ourselves, you know. We're, we're a certain size of the district, so we kind of scaled back what came back in the market around us. You know, the, the question is, can we compete against Fort Worth who's offering ten dollars more an hour? Can we compete against Southlake who's offering, I think, pretty close to it, or at least eight dollars roughly more? I mean, there, all around us in bigger areas, it's harder to, to compete with these.
Eight dollars more an hour, Southlake pays?
I'll have to go back and look at their actual pay.
I, I can tell you, and you can go on the Southlake website, I, I thought they took a beautiful policy position. They just acknowledged right up front on the page that shows their salary and classification ranges, um, that we acknowledge that, uh, we wanna recruit and retain the best and brightest. And we understand that salaries that we're paying for a lot of these roles don't really afford for someone to live in a town that doesn't even have apartments, right? Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna buy policy, figure out what the market wage is, and pay ten percent more than that, just as a choice they made, and it's stated right there on their personnel page. So that is the group we're competing with. I mean, they have a, you know, a range, but then they say, we're gonna pay more than that.
But yet, that is, we're not just focusing on the, the, the entry level positions here. We're trying to recruit somebody who's got a B license or a C license. We're talking about a bigger amount of range there. That, that's what we need to really, I mean, the, the, the entry level that we have here is usually someone who's got either fresh out, got a D, or it's got, you know, just been working six months into a water system, and they're coming in. You've got a bigger range when you bring somebody who's got a decade of experience. That's kind of what we're looking for, someone who can jump into rotation and start going.
How, what's the, what's the availability of the candidates in the marketplace, if that makes sense? I mean, do, I, I mean, it's like.
Supply and demand right now. Everybody's out there looking. We are embedded with hundreds of job applicants out there, applications out there, that we're trying to, we're trying to get somebody to nibble on what we have out there. It gets buried within days.
But Mike, so you're saying there is, there, there's a shortage of can, there's a shortage of workers in that industry?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, then in my mind, you have no, you, you have no option when you're working with a shortage of workers in the industry to be more competitive? I mean, that by, by nature drives up the salary range.
And, and I guess I would question when we, because, I mean, we're a small district. We're talking five, six, seven people. I mean, when we say we can't afford to pay five thousand, ten thousand more, we're talking fifty thousand dollars on a ten million dollar budget. I mean, I, I can't see a water operator breaking the district.
I think it's a penny.
It's not even that. I mean, we just can't get them in the door, so right now, everybody's out there looking. If you go to a TML website, look at careers, you go to TML, uh, what's your, TRWA? I mean, all those websites, you go look, everybody's wanting to hire. I mean, they've got their pick, and they can probably walk in there and say, well, this is what I want. If not, I'm gonna go to the next.
And it's not that we can't afford, it's that we're working within what was adopted or was approved when we did the comp study. That's what we have, our range is what we've been working off of. You know, we, we've sat down with managers and talked about, you know, some of them says, hey, they're gonna leave to, to go somewhere, and they're making significant amount. I mean, we, we try to go within, within the range that we have. But if they go so far outside of range, then we have to unfortunately let them go.
Yeah, what I.
And we're cheap. So let's, let's be straight up about that. I, uh, I had a boss once, we used to joke that he could make fire rubbing two nickels together. And that's the nature of our industry, but I wanna point out one, one reality. Um, in the utility industry, there, there were a lot of people of my generation who hired on, who worked for careers and got to the, you know, the retirement finish line. Um, and that resulted in what we call a demographic overhang, right? We got, when you look at the demographics of who came into the industry, I mean, just look here at Trophy Club. We, um, we added the whole PID, and the MUD has not added a single operator, a staff member since then. I mean, the, the number of positions. So the truth of it is that the economies of scale in utility work really well. You can, you can add extra customers without adding a lot of staff. Doesn't change the fact that, um, you know, most of our staff is fifty or older, um, in that group. And we really need to think about that.
Said most, come on, easy boy.
I see three in here.
I said, most of the people in the operations group. So I would say that the average age of people working for Mike is, um, over fifty, if I'm wrong.
And Mike is.
I'll buy lunch.
For retirement.
As of last year.
As of last year, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that the end result is, I mean, we can, and to your point, Carmen, you know, those were the days past, when you could go in lowballed and say, take it or leave it. Uh, now they're leaving it. And I would say, uh, what I would expect from staff is come back with, amend the salary ranges to be what's appropriate for the environment. We can be dinosaurs and continue to spin on this wheel, or we can adjust to it and pay market. So that's a study, that's a guide for us to, to guide compensation. But if that guide no longer works, we don't continue to use it, uh, just because it was there. So we, uh, we shot ourselves and, uh, we, we made a decision, that's two years ago, or a year ago. Let's just move on, come back with, uh, what realistic we need to pay to compensate workers for, uh, the market, and let's go forward and get off the Ferris wheel.
We will bring that proposal back. I, I would just add that, you know, to some extent, there's some hesitance on my part. You know, if you're, if you're a senior manager and you're, um, adjusting your own salary scales, it starts to look like the fox guarding the hen house. I would think that the managers here can come back with a modification to the entry level operator position, since none of us are in those, and that you guys wouldn't take it like, whoa, you guys are just feathering your own nest, so to speak, with the change in the salary range.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're, you know, I always worry about that, and that's why I recommended we go out for an independent salary range development. It hadn't been done in its entirety for the MUD ever. So we have one, and we propose that we bring that back every three to five years for an update. Um, but certainly talked about, if you recall at the time, that, um, we would, at, we can go out for, just have one job classification reviewed for salaries. Um, we can do that, we can do a little bit of our own footwork and say, here's where the comparables are today, and it's not just the range, but what are they actually paying new people when they come through the door? The fact that they're coming in not at the bottom of the range, even if they're at the bottom of the skill set range, um, is probably gonna be more reflective of what you're talking about, the market reality of today.
Yeah, I, I think we, we picked, we, uh, got the salaries for Fort Worth and Grapevine. Were they included? So I think we have the information. We just need to, uh, as, um, Stephen said, remove the bias that we placed into it by going shifting down to the lower end of the market, which, uh, you know, when someone goes to look for a job, I don't think they limit themselves to districts with fifteen employees or less. They go and say, who's gonna pay the most, so, um, so I think if we have the information, use that to, to get us where we need to be. Uh, was that it from your report?
That's all I have unless, um, the board has any other questions.
I was gonna ask a couple of questions on, on the report. Brakes and leaks, uh, had a leak at a property, went out, went at it. The person that was there objected to you working there. So my question is, does our protocol require knocking on a door to advise working in hour easement on a property?
It doesn't. If it's preventative and planned work, we put out door hangers. Oftentimes, we run into the challenge that most people don't actually go through the door, that we hang the hanger on, they go through the garage door and, so they're hanging it on there. But, um, when we have a, a leak, which we determine an emergency, and in this case, it was on the small end of that range, we just go out and start working.
Okay, I was thinking it might be. I, I understand, you know, it's not exactly somebody that has a heart attack here on the street, but yeah, I'm gonna work in your yard, go up and hit, hit the door three ti, knock on the door three times. I get an answer, I'm, I'm gonna talk to you, tell you that I'm digging up your yard, because, look, you got a fountain out there that you hadn't planned on, and that's good. Uh, and if they don't answer, they don't answer. That was just my thought on that. Uh, on this power failure at the wastewater treatment plant, and the splitter gates, and the one that failed. Okay, so it failed in an open position and took everything from all the others. What happens if all the splitter gates flow, close? What happens to the incoming flow?
Okay, so it basically runs over the top of the gates, but it's even back out, because it's coming over all the gates equally at some point.
So, okay, so then it goes over the gates and continues on? Okay, we don't, we don't get an SSO?
No.
Unless, of course, it goes on long enough that it overflows the basins themselves. Uh, it'd be at a one-fifth or eight, let's put it like that.
Yeah. Okay, that's all we got. Oh, I had one other question. Do we, and this goes back to a discussion we had, uh, when we were working at a budget, and it's with Stephen. There was a question that came up about the, uh, monthly water operations report and the volumes. Remember that question?
Right.
Did we get that, did you, did you get that ironed out? You, you don't understand, but, it's, what happened is, in our discussions on the budget and looking at, uh, the amount of water sold or pumped, I can't remember which one it was, we had a discrepancy in, in our, between what the numbers that Stephen had and what I had based off of this chart. And so you're gonna take a look and see if.
Yeah, so the numbers.
Stephen probably can't see the chart you're pointing to. You're just talking about the water flow graphs that are included in the.
Water, the water, yeah, monthly water operations report.
Yeah, so the, the report that I went through and looked at with Mike, because you're pulling off of Mike's reports. Now, Mike's reports deviate a little bit from mine, based on, he pulled, we, we both take a fluent out, but he also counts for temporary meters, uh, and then.
Are flushing anything, and I'm probably pulling, I'm pulling my data from our meter read dates. I'm not doing, uh, calendar.
Correct.
Month on here. I'm going from when we read meters to when we read meters.
Okay.
So I'm overlapping.
And I'm doing it for the whole entire month, so I'm doing from the first to the thirtieth versus from the twenty-fifth.
But how do you get data? I mean, the only data available is what he's reading, right?
No, see, he takes it through UB, as far as, from there to there. I take it through actually the month, so we actually have a, our UB system, I'm able to cut off a certain time.
Oh, I see what you, so you're doing one through thirty, and he's doing twenty-eight to twenty-eight?
Yeah, where, where, whatever the day falls off. Correct. So there'll be some variance there for the days that they fall differently. So if you got five heavy days of raining, you know, on one side, it will make a difference on either side. And then I also pulled out meters that he counts that I don't, because we don't budget temporary meters when contracts come in. I can't budget who's gonna come in and pull a temporary meter. So there are some vari, there's a little bit of variance difference in our data there.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, uh, it is eight forty-four, uh, pursuant to section five fifty-one dash, I mean, point zero seven one of the Texas Open Meeting Act, the board may consult with this attorney in executive session in a matter which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas clearly conflicts with Open Meeting Act, or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, uh, contractor breach performance and payment issues related to district's contract with Webber Codogwill Partners for construction of wastewater treatment plant improvements. B, Trophy Club Municipal District One First Arcadia Services LOC and the District Board of Tarrant County, one hundred and forty-first Judiciary District, cause number one forty-one dash two ninety-nine, three fifty-one dash eighteen. And C, fire department matters in a local agreement with the county of Trophy Club related to fire department funding and operations. And B, funding alternatives for acquisition of new fire truck. Section twelve pursuant to five fifty-one dash zero seven two of the Texas Open Meeting Act, the board may deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property deliberations in an open meeting would be detrimental, would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body, negotiation with such third person. Sell or exchange of district real property located in one hundred minutes will drive in fifteen oh one Junction Way. B, purchase of easements required for construction and operation of water transmission line improvements from district pump station or elevated water tank located on TW Keen Road. We will, it's now eight forty-five, we'll now enter into executive session. It is now nine fifty-six. We're returning to regular session. Considering take appropriate actual matters deliberate in executive session. Uh, we did not take any actions in, uh, executive session, so there's nothing to take action on. Items for future agenda. Uh, we have the meeting coming up on the twenty-ninth, the joint meeting.
That will be here.
That'll be here, this location. And then our next regular scheduled meeting is August nineteenth, at twenty, uh, twenty nineteen, six thirty.
Yes.
Anything else? Karen, no?
Move for adjourn.
Move forward, move accepted. I know, we don't have to do a forward second all that, because if anyone says anything, I'll totally put their hands out.
All right.